Call this meeting to order. Roll call, please. Vice Mayor Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Lamson.
Aye.
Please stand for silent prayer and flag salute. Councilmember Sandu, would you lead us in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We're going to take just a minute for Mr. Palazzo to introduce someone.
Yeah, I'd just like to take a quick minute to acknowledge and introduce, Michael Saline is joining us tonight. We've talked a lot about Mike. He's been in our council meetings before, actually as I hired him and introduced him to the city council. Had a nice write-up in the newspaper. He comes to us from San Joaquin County with over 26 years of experience. Lives nearby in Lodi. And I don't know if Michael would like to say something to the council real quick?
Thank you, Jean. No, I'm just really, really excited and grateful to be here and just look forward to serving the city. I'm very attracted to, you know, the small-town feel and family-friendly atmosphere and just looking forward to being a part of the team and, you know, taking the city forward. Thank you.
Welcome. Read your statement.
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, March 8th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, March 9th at 9:00 a.m. The city council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you. Are there any agenda approval additions and/or deletions?
I have one.
Okay.
I'd like to pull consent item number four for discussion.
I would like to pull 1, 5, and 6.
Okay. Moving on to presentations. Chief Sockman.
Mayor and members of council, I'm very pleased to introduce our newest officer, Herman Greewall. And so, we are very, very fortunate to have him here. He's going to tell his story after we swear him in. But just a little bit about him. I've committed to the citizens of Galt and the members of this police department that we only hire quality people with great character and that is going to get along well with all the other officers because when you have that kind of camaraderie and relationships and friendships, the whole department works seamlessly. So, we are very, very pleased that he's here. A little bit about him. He was born in India, came to the United States in 2012, right? And then lived in Lodi with his family and then became a U.S. citizen in 2017. So, it's a real success story. Galt's going to benefit from that. One of the things that he told me was seeing the police in India and then talking to family about the police officers here in the United States. He knew that he wanted to come here to this country and he knew that he wanted to be a police officer in this country. So, again, we are very, very fortunate. And tonight, he has his family here and you also brought your uncle, who is going to pin on your badge following your swearing in.
Hi, Herman Greewall.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend...
That I will support and defend...
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
To the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
Enduring such times.
Enduring such times.
As an employee.
As an employee.
For the city of Galt. I will faithfully discharge...
I will faithfully discharge...
The duties of a police officer.
The duties of a police officer.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
The pinning of the badge is something that you will never forget. The first person that ever pinned your badge on you. You'll never forget that person and you'll never forget that moment. So, choosing the right person when you're bringing up all of your family here is very, very important. So, it's a great honor, sir. And here's the badge. And if you draw blood, you get extra points.
Now, if you go up, introduce yourself to the...
Thank you.
First, I just want to thank the Galt Police Department, the City Council of Galt. And I want to thank the community for giving me this opportunity to work for the City of Galt and the Galt Police Department. I'm excited to be here and join the team who really takes pride in its community owed to the policing. And with the help of my great team, my FTO and my supervisors, I want to carry on this tradition and want to engage in the community and be a part of this community. And I'm really excited to be here and I want to thank my family for being here today. And thank you, everybody, for all your support and love. I'm a really lucky person to be here today. So, thank you very much.
Can I get a picture? Yes, of course.
He does. Yeah.
If you don't mind, I'm going to take a picture.
Can I go too? Wants to come down with you too? Okay. Not me. I feel like I'm mistaken.
Thank you.
Yeah. You don't want to smile? Yeah.
All depends.
Right.
Little fedora on. Little baby has a fedora. Awesome.
Congratulations. Ms. Studdles, can you read the public comment, please?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the city council to receive comments except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Speaker cards are located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers. Once completed, forward the speaker card to the clerk. Those persons wishing to speak on an item scheduled on the agenda will be given an opportunity to do so at the time that item is being considered.
All right. I have Jahan Khan. Would you please come to the podium? Welcome.
Good evening to city council members. Good evening and good evening to the folks of Galt. Excuse me, I'm fearful of public speaking, so my apologies. Again, my name is Jahan Khan and I am the store manager of the Walmart in Galt, California. First and foremost, I would like to thank Gail for encouraging me to come tonight and speak on behalf of Walmart. So, I just want to say thank you, Gail. So, appreciate it. Thank you. It's all right. So, again, my name is Jahan. I'm store manager of Galt. I've been with the company now for 20 years. It's the last two years here in the city of Galt. Just wanted to take the time and put a name to a face or put a face to a name, however you want to say it. So, just want to do that. And then also, just want to inform the city council and the folks of Galt that we're going to be having a new program called Online Grocery that's going to be being offered to our folks in Galt. So, it's going to be a brand-new service to our customers. Our grand opening is going to be on April 2nd. So, I'd like to encourage everybody to attend. It's going to be a great new service to our customers as we're going where customers could now shop at home and do their shopping and will be able to deliver their groceries to their vehicle on the side of the parking lot. So, that's going to be pretty cool, I should say. So, other than that, that's pretty much all I got. I'm sorry. Thank you for welcoming and thank you.
Thank you. Jahan, what date was that?
I'm sorry, April 2nd.
All right. Reports by city council members on regional boards, commissions, and committees. Councilmember Farmer.
I have nothing.
I mean, Vice Mayor Farmer, sorry. Councilmember Sandu.
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Campion.
Yeah, last week, the committee for the Habitat Conservation Plan met, approved the budget and also approved the fee schedules. So, those will be going forward. There are a couple of minor things that may be coming back to the city as cleanups that were discovered by Army Corps of Engineers. So, it's minor stuff, but it may necessitate the jurisdiction to take another action. And we have interviews for an executive director sometime next month.
Councilmember Lozano.
Yeah, just had to report out on the SACOG meeting that was on the 21st. We had a presentation, prosperity partnership presentation, and so, folks were brought in from outside of the area to talk about how SACOG could really look at mega-regional areas to address some of the needs. They were also talking about pension issues and how to address that from not only a state but regional perspective. And then, presenting were the Bay Area Council of Economic Institute that came and talked about what they're doing in the mega-region of the Bay Area as it relates to transportation and jobs. And that's pretty much about it. We did approve the option two for the rate increase for partner memberships, our partner agencies. And so, it's going to be a two-year process. And so, it'll be a little easier on agencies to budget for that. So, that went as planned, as reported last time. So, still working on the MTPSCS, Transportation Sustainability Strategy. And so, that's still going forward and we'll continue to work on that. And that is it.
Thank you. Last night, I went to the beginning of the youth commission meeting and then I ran over to a meeting with development department about zoning in the notch area, which is Simmerhorn and Marengo. And we had some good conversations, very well run. It was highly attended. It was standing room only. So, we had a good meeting with that. I attended the SAC Metro Air District Board Meeting and a lot of the meeting was about regarding AB 617, which is the community air protection legislation and how it may impact businesses in Sacramento County. In particular, the California Air Resources Board is finalizing regulation that will require most permitted businesses in our region to report emissions. Also, they identified 10 communities within Sacramento County that have the highest pollution levels. And if you remember, most of the air pollution today is still caused by vehicles. So, those 10 areas with the highest emissions tend to have the older vehicles. So, they've got a few million dollars that they're working on, making an incentive program to help people kind of get rid of those old vehicles. And we've got a lot to figure out, but we're working on that. And that is it. Okay. Information consent calendar. We receive and file warrants for a period ending February 20th, 2019. Approve allocation of $500 to the Galt District Chamber of Crammerance Hundred Year Anniversary Banner Program for hardware for Mayor Lamson's discretionary funds in the fiscal year 2018 to 19 budget. That is all we have left on consent. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
By Councilmember Lozano, second.
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Farmer. Roll call vote, please. Vice Mayor Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion. Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Lamson.
Aye.
All right. Subject one, the minutes of the regular meeting of the February 19th, 2019. We have pulled the minutes. I think Vice Mayor Farmer pulled the minutes?
Yeah, it was just a couple of small things. Sorry I didn't get this earlier, but last week, we had a public speaker, Mr. Ruben Epstein. In the minutes, it's written as "Ruben" with a V instead of a B. So, just a simple name correction.
It is a V?
No, it's actually "Ruben" with a B, but it says V in the minutes, like a "Ruben."
I believe it's a V. Yeah, it's a V.
Is it, in fact, really?
Yeah.
Well, I apologize, Mr. Epstein. And the second thing was, it had mentioned that we had the motion and approved the purchase of the banners. And it basically stated that we had approved a purchase of an even number of banners for the banner program, but we did, in fact, have a number of 50. I know that's changed to 48 now, but I just thought it was awkward that it didn't mention any quantity that we had approved to buy. I thought that maybe that was important to have in there. So, that's it. That's all I had.
Okay, thank you.
Move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Councilmember Campion and second by Councilmember Lozano. Roll call vote. Vice Mayor Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion. Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Lamson.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Passed the consent calendar. I apologize. Number four, police department vehicles pulled by Councilmember Lozano.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask a couple of clarifying questions in regards to the purchase and the use, the funds that are being used to purchase them. We have supplemental law enforcement service, which is Fund 070, Measure R, and then also the Community Facilities District money. And my understanding is none of this is general fund money. But could you explain how we got to the point where we could purchase? We had the ability to purchase three vehicles out of Measure R? And then, secondly, the Community Facilities District and how we get that money and where it comes from, I guess? And then I have a comment at the bottom there.
Okay. And if I drive out of my lane, I'll kick it to the finance director for specifics about the CFD. However, related specifically to Fund 47, there are three vehicles that are determined up for deadline and on your staff report. It identifies as six vehicles. Those six vehicles, or three of those vehicles are Measure R at 62, 64, and 65. We're all currently Measure R cars that were purchased at that time. They run their life expectancy and you can see the verbiage on the side for the different drama they have. So, that's the justification based on the expenditure to Measure R for that specific item. And then, the CFD is what I really call the Melrose for Public Safety, includes fire, and it's for all new development in the community that occurs. And so, there's a portion of property tax that goes specifically to that fund. Some kicks over to CFD Fire for their component of work. And that can include things and currently includes one FTE in that fund. But there's the ability to purchase equipment and other things related directly to the issues under the public safety umbrella. There's much more discretion in Fund 38 than there is Fund 47 because 38 wasn't a specially-approved tax by the... 38 wasn't like 47 was, the Measure R sales tax. Measure R sales tax has specific components and actions that we need to take in order to expend the funds. So, that's where...
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. And I just want to make sure that we're doing what we can to really be diligent about the expenditure of Measure R funds. And so, I just wanted to make sure that part of the public process is the explanation of the three Measure R cars that are originally purchased under Measure R are now deadlined.
Correct.
And then, just the last, there's a sentence at the end that talks about future budget appropriations for annual purchase of three marked frontline law enforcement vehicles and one unmarked. And it'll be evaluated as part of the future annual budget development process. I just want to make sure that as we move forward that we're not inadvertently using either Measure R funds or other funds that are protected or funds that are specific for that and that as we go through, we identify why we're spending that money. And then, you know, as we move forward through a vehicle replacement program, that we really address it in the general fund budget as we move forward. And I know we're not talking about budget tonight, but I just want to put that out there so everybody knows. That's at least where my head is, is that unless there's a specific reason why we're purchasing out of other funds that are protected of sorts, that we build that into the budget moving forward.
Fair enough. And one thing I wanted to add on this, these numbers that are presented for our purchase tonight, we were making the request through City Hall and the due diligence was done actually by Mark Clarkston, who's, you know, less emotionally involved about our rolling fleet and he has overall responsibility for the vehicles. So, based on his recommendation and the chiefs asked through City Hall, you know, they were almost identical. And we've said for some time, the three-in-one maintains a, I guess, lack of a better term, an expected expenditure from year to year, so you can predict that. And I think you saw probably from Claire in the last meeting that there was a number of $240,000 for vehicles. However, based on the change in the make and model of vehicle that we're going to be using going forward, that number is going to be 185. So, there's actually some capacity and savings since your last meeting and presentation.
Awesome.
Yes.
That's good news.
Yes.
Yeah. And, you know, the reality, I mean, I don't have a problem with whether or not we need to purchase vehicles or not when, you know, when it comes to public safety and the safety of our employees. I think it's important that we do that. And I think it's more important, moving forward, that we don't come to a point where we have to come to a council meeting to ask for that, that we just build that in as part of our budget.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion?
Yes, I have some stuff. So, again, along with what Rich said, I'm very much always trying to be in favor of giving you guys what you need. But I did have a lot of inquiries, some emails, people asking some questions. So, I did meet with Lieutenant Kalinowski and Chief Sockman for a significant amount of time the other day and kind of picked their brain on some things and tried to, you know, dissect into this a little bit more. And then, I also did my own research and, you know, went out, contacted a couple of their departments that I have some contacts with and kind of just picked their brains about, you know, what's the life expectancy of patrol cars and that kind of thing. And so, basically, what I determined from them, which you guys supported, was that what I found that $85,000 to $90,000 is typically the life expectancy of a patrol car from the department. We're clearly over 100 on all these that we're phasing out. So, we've basically, you know, have been kicking the can down the road for a while. So, I just, you know, again, wanted to, we talked about ratio of officers per car and uses of the cars. We really kind of dove into a lot and they were very helpful in their answers. But one thing I wanted to touch on, I think it was important, is the chief pointed out that we're currently using Ford Crown Victorias and the Interceptors, the Explorers. You mentioned that we're going to be transitioning to a different vehicle mainly because of the purpose of the, they're going to be less expensive. The Ford product has gone up significantly. And so, originally, what would have been almost a $500,000 request for these vehicles is now only a $405,000 request because of that. So, would one of you like to mention, just the vehicle change, what that is?
Yeah, so historically, as you've seen in the community, the Ford Crown Victoria, which most people are familiar with, was phased out by Ford and we went to that Explorer look vehicle that most agencies went to. CHP, that was their primary vehicle. But to be direct, Ford has priced us out of the market. So, the price for those Ford Interceptor SUV models, if we were to buy them now with sales tax and everything, is about $39,000. And then, if we were to buy the hybrid model, so we can save gas, that price is $42,000. And so, clearly, when you factor in another $20,000 or so thousand to outfit the car, we're north of 60, almost at $65,000 per patrol vehicle. And on an item that clearly depreciates from day one because they get used pretty hard, that's probably not the best use of our resources unless we just have money laying around. And I don't sense that's the case. So, we looked at the Dodge Chargers. There are several agencies that are moving to those. CHP also has a contract for now for the Dodge Charger. And the price for that out the door with sales tax and everything and the items we want on it for pre-wiring is $29,000. And there's about a $2,000 savings in the difference of an SUV build based on the extra windows and other things that you've got to secure to a sedan build. So, we're saving in the neighborhood of, well, a frontline law enforcement vehicle is now at $50,000 instead of 65 when I first wrote the staff report. And then, the unmarked cars remain at that $35,000 threshold. The Dodge, the Ford... The Dodge, the Ford have the same warranty on the drivetrain, so there's no lost capacity in terms of warranty work and things that'll occur related to that, so everything's the same. And then, after these purchases, we, the three-in-one was mentioned by council earlier, we will have replaced 50% of our frontline fleet and 27% of our unmarked fleet after this purchase, and if the budget holds for the July 1st build. We don't want to be in a place where buying six cars, because we cause a problem five or six years from now when we're in the same place. So, we need to be methodical in those purchases moving forward, so we don't leave a future council pressured to make some tough decisions if we're in tighter times. So, that's where we're at.
And, yeah, so, yeah, just, I mean, this is, this is a pretty big expenditure, nine cars, but I've talked to some of the PD, and they're pretty excited about it. But like I said, I know that, just so the public knows, we've been kicking this down the road a while, kind of pushing this off, so it's, it's good that we can finally find the, the money to address it. I thought of a question after I met with you guys, though, and sometimes I know that this can be just cost ineffective to do this, but is there any savings at all in, in stripping any of the equipment out? Because you mentioned we're going to basically phase out the old vehicles at a really cheap price. Is there's no, is there no value in stripping that equipment, have it reinstalled, or is a lot of that stuff usually outdated, or?
So, the stuff in the Ford Crown Victorias is not going to be usable for us. In fact, two of the cars that are deadlined have electrical and light bar issues. We actually bought the light bars thinking we were going to spend the money to put light bars on cars, but when we did the math, it didn't make sense. Actually, two of those light bars are going on the future cars. So, other than stripping them down and using them for some lightweight stuff in town that maybe another department needed, we would not have use for them, Galt wouldn't have use for them, and so we would sell those in GovDeals.com, that's who we use, and then whatever fund bought that vehicle, those funds, those proceeds are returned to those funds. So, cages and, and siren controllers and things aren't going to work out of those Crown Vic's. Those are, you know, and if they didn't get recycled out of a prior build, they're at least eight or nine years old, and probably 14 or 15 years old. All the equipment and the electrical currents and all these things just change over time and are more efficient, and use less battery and, and other things, and so we will switch all that equipment out, including the police radios, which are needed because of the digital, digital conversion we did.
Okay. We did talk, one last thing, we did talk about the, the one vehicle that was not a deadlined vehicle, was the 2013, the 2013 Explorer, it's got like, you know, a little over 100, which for frontline use is obviously, you know, past its, its safe, what we consider. But we talked about when the time comes to phase those vehicles out, so when the new vehicles come in that you're going to be purchasing, which is like six months down the road, that there was, I asked if there would be any vehicles we could reuse within the city, like another department, you know, a 2013 SUV with 100,000, you know, maybe useful in parks and rec or some other thing. You said that maybe we could, you know, reach out to, maybe when that time comes, we can phase that out, maybe we can talk to city manager and see if that vehicle would be useful, because, you know, the price you gave me, we sell these things pretty low.
Correct.
Like a thousand dollars or something like that, so.
Right.
Could be a useful vehicle somewhere else, just a thought, if, if it's still functioning at that time, so. That's all I had of the subject.
Right, and we have, and historically, Armando's been good about taking ours. See, there he is.
So, I have a question. Chief, can you tell us how many marked cars and how many unmarked, and then what you, what ideally in a perfect world that we should prepare for the rotation to be?
Right. So, right now, we have 18 black and white vehicles, and we have 15 unmarked vehicles. When you, with the black and white vehicles, that's two sergeants, one traffic, two K-9, two school resource officers, one pop, and that leaves 10 vehicles for the remainder of our 17 general law enforcement officers, so they share cars. Now, the 15 unmarked, that includes our CAPS vehicles, so that's five detective vehicles, three admin vehicles, one crime prevention, one parking, one vehicle for other admin uses, and I mentioned those four CAPS vehicles, that totals 15.
And how often would you like to rotate those?
So, in order to maintain our fleet to a standard, we're requesting that we purchase these nine next fiscal year, if we purchase another three-in-one, and every subsequent year after that, if we did a three-in-one, then we would be stable, and we would be rotating the vehicles when they hit their life expectancy. We wouldn't be trying to spend a lot of money to, to keep them rolling when they really shouldn't be. So, with the three-in-one rotation every year, that would, that would really stabilize the fleet. And that would actually give us a good budget item, where we can budget every year and stuff, so we wouldn't come to council with such a big request, so.
Thank you, that helps. Is there any other discussion?
I would like to make a comment, you know, this vehicle is really, you know, I will support it, I really need it, because these departments work in the frontline. They need to do their job, they need tools, and these, the tools they use when they go on a frontline. I also really appreciate when the cost comparison, that's a very important part of the, any business or, or the city, you know, when you're doing anything, if you cost factor, and I believe they did it. They go with the different dealership, and we all know the Ford jack up their price. So, thank you, I really thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Yeah, so, there's, there were some questions, one last thing, you know, the 100,000 miles, everybody like, you know, 100,000 miles on a 2013 vehicle, that's not. And that's why, of course, I went out and did my research, but, so just so the public understands, you know, 100,000 on a police vehicle, these things are driven in town, so it's like 100,000 city miles, that's hard miles on transmissions. Crown Victorias, to me, are not like what I would consider like, you know, they're not like a Toyota where they're going to go. So, that's, that's 100,000 is really pushing, pushing it. So, I definitely think that we've, we've stretched every dollar we can out of these cars, and, and I'm personally, am very satisfied with the information that we were given, and that this is the right thing, in my opinion, so.
I actually would like to make one more comment. And so, so for the public, a police car is a police officer's office. There are days where you respond calmly to calls, and there are some times you have to go with lights and sirens. There are times where you're driving the speed limit for weeks at a time, and then in a moment's notice, you have to exceed the speed limit in a chase, or trying to get somewhere to get help to somebody in a moment's notice. And so, when you're talking about 100,000 miles on a police car that sometimes is idling for periods of time, more than a normal car, or when you're in a chase and it goes over rough terrain and it does a lot of damage to the undercarriage, the transmission and heavy braking and everything else, so these cars get put through a lot. We are fortunate in the city of Galt, where, you know, we don't have a lot of crime that impacts us with, and we're not very big, I mean, our, our square mileage. But you never know when something's going to happen, and the best example was last week, where that chase went from Modesto up through into South Sacramento, we were involved. And so, so you don't know, it's not just about what's happening, it's what comes into our city. And so, you just don't ever know, and so the, the vehicles have to be safe, they have to be reliable, and we have to do that for the police officers to make sure that, that the vehicles are going to hold up to those conditions, so that there's not an equipment failure where the car shuts down, and they can, and we can't get to where we need to be, or the, there's equipment failure and somebody gets seriously hurt. So, I thought that was important to say, too. So, when Vice Mayor Farmer was talking about, yeah, there's only 100,000 miles on this vehicle, that's, that's a lot of miles on a, on a police car. And so, what, what most agencies do is, right about 80,000 miles, they're planning for the replacement, they're ordering those cars, it takes six months to get them in, then they have to get outfitted. So, these cars that we're purchasing now, best case scenario, we may see them.
September, October. It'll be our first build, so there's always struggles on the first car, but that's probably when we'll see them. Might see the unmarks a little faster, because they don't need as much equipment, but that's how we'll see them.
So, that's the other thing that's important when you're planning for future cars. I mean, you order them, you all approve it today, we order them, let's say tomorrow, which we won't be, but tomorrow, we order them, we, we will see them September, October, here, and then, then they have to get built, and they could, that could take a couple months also, so.
And if we bought those Fords, we wouldn't see them until, you know, December, maybe January. They're on, they're truly on a, those Dodges we can, might get in 90 days, those Fords are at 24 weeks right now.
Really?
And that's before this glut of ordering, because they switched the platforms and did a bunch of things, and thus, they raised the price, so. That's what we have.
Any more discussion? Thank you, Lieutenant Kalanowski, I appreciate you coming and standing before the firing squad here. And I have a public comment from Rick Walters.
Just a matter of clarification, are you using Measure R money to purchase cars?
That's correct.
You can't do that. It's not in the voter initiative.
Well, we did research that, and that was one of the questions that I did ask.
I can bring you the code, and it says under no circumstances, can you do that? You can't clarify what voters voted for or not. You can't do that. You can't use it for graffiti cleanup either.
I'll have you talk to him out in the, at the room if you want.
I can take these numbers, we can meet.
Okay.
No, I'd like to have an answer, if you can tell me. I don't want to meet with somebody in the private, I want it out in the open here.
Well, Mr. Kalanask, Lieutenant Kalanowski, sorry, is a part of the Measure R committee, is he that I spoke with, could, is there some staff?
So, the Measure R tax initiative that went forward does allow for the purchase of, that will first allows for the hiring of the staff, which is the seven officers and the two dispatchers, and subsequently, we added some additional staff. And then, it allows us to purchase equipment and training, and use those funds for retention purposes, which various members of the council have been involved in over the years. So, this tax measure's been in place since 2008, and there have been six or seven different patrol cars that have been purchased, investigations vehicle, and replaced, and that has been a common, ongoing expenditure, and it's completely within the bounds of the use of Measure R. And we're happy to meet with the gentleman offline and provide him the text of that, but it's clearly outlined in the, in the initiative, and it also talks about gang prevention and graffiti abatement. All that language is in Measure R.
Please do get that information to Mr. Walters.
Thank you, Kalanowski.
And just so you know, that was a question, Mr. Walters, that was brought to me, and I, I addressed that right off the bat to find out about that, so that was a concern of mine as well. So, we will get that, too, absolutely.
Absolutely. We'll handle that. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other public comment? All right, adopt a resolution approving the purchase of nine police vehicles and amending fiscal year 2018-19 budget to appropriate funds. Do I get a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Councilmember Lozano, Vice Mayor Farmer. Ready, roll call vote?
Vice Mayor Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Sandhu.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Lamson.
Aye. Motion passes five to zero. All right, subject five, award of consulting service agreement for the report of waste discharge for the wastewater treatment plant. I believe Council or Vice Mayor Farmer pulled that?
Yeah, I just, and I did, I did get with city manager today, and we had a brief conference call with Mr. Sellings and Mr. Clarkson, and just covered a couple of questions, because again, I had some inquiries about this, and wanted just some clarification. So, just so I understand this correctly, basically, in 2015, we, it was our last time we had a discharge permit, we're expecting, we need another one every five years, so next year. I know Mr., or Councilmember Lozano inquired if we had anybody on staff that could do this permit, and the answer was no, although we are not required by law to, to hire a consultant to do this, that we were told, Mr. Lozano and I were told that we don't have anybody in staff that could perform this task, which is why we were going out to consultants. So, just want to understand that that's, that is correct, what we're doing here. And on page two of the staff report, it mentions that the request went out to nine consultants, and only one, which was Yost and Associates, had responded, but then, in the last paragraph, it said that RFP went out to 10 firms, not nine, so I don't know if that was just a, you know, clerical error, it says 10, one, nine, but, you know, there was a mention about why the others did not respond. So, out of all that were, that went out for requests, only one responded and said they would do it. This is a company that has done business with Galt before, but can you just briefly, just for the public, explain what was the reason why the other people said that they weren't interested?
Yes. Excuse me, through the mayor, yeah, Vice Mayor Farmer, basically, maybe a point of clarification as far as staff's ability, there's going to be some staff work, I mean, we're going to have to manage the consultant, but we do have some in-house, you know, capability, so it's not that, that we have zero capability, I mean, we could do some of this work ourselves. However, there is a legal portion of the work, and there's also a technical portion of the work that's beyond our staff resources, and so that's the primary justification for going out to get a consultant. So, a point of clarification on that. Sorry, can you repeat the second question?
That, that it just mentioned that there was nine, there was RFP sent to nine, and then it said, and then Connor Dixon said there was 10, I just.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to refer to Mr. Clarkson on that, as I was not here at the time.
I don't think it matters, but nine or 10, I just.
Yes, we did submit to 10 firms, and nine did not respond.
Okay, okay. So, my next part of this question on this item would be, so we're basically approving 118,000 plus an $11,000 contingency. And then, another part of this is that we're authorizing the city manager and the Public Works Director to approve any additional costs that would, would surpass 118,000, that stay within that contingency. I understand contingencies, I, I'm a contractor, I get it. But I, what I thought about was that I was reading the, the scope of work from Yost, and it, it did mention that they had done the permit with us in 2015, and it basically said that, in their, their words were, that West Yost Development had done the previous RWD for the city's wastewater treatment plant in 2015. Much of the information needed, needed for the new RWD is included in that document, so it will allow for a streamlined effort. So, with that being said, I know it was said that, you know, the price of the one person that came back, although that was still in line with what we expected, I was thinking, if we're expecting to see certain numbers, when you go out to 10 people and one responds, I would assume that they were probably, that's like a expected retail price, but yet, they're stating that because they had ongoing work with us, and they had already information on hand, that this would be a streamlined effort, almost like saying they have a jump start. So, do you feel like we're still being charged fair price, although they're kind of pitching it as like, hey, this is going to be a slam dunk for us, because we've already done one in the past? That was just kind of my thought of it.
Yeah, and I, I know the staff report touches on, you know, essentially, as far as maybe kind of a characterization of some of the other responses that we got, you just don't know how, you know, other consultants' workload is, I mean, whether they're already, you know, basically maxed out their capabilities, and, you know, sometimes people come and go from one firm to another or something, so they may not have the expertise, you know, that they might have had previously to compete. But I think, you know, West Yost, having done it before in 2015, I mean, these things, there is a certain amount of, you know, information that, you know, that they can, it's somewhat boilerplateed to a degree, to where they can, you know, take advantage of that. So, I feel like that we're getting a, a good price on this. I would refer to Mr. Clarkson if he has any, you know, follow-up additional, so.
Okay. Yeah, so, I mean, I, I get the contingencies, just protocol. But I also keep, always keep in mind, when it comes to approving anything where there's like, you know, we're going to approve this much, but we can always go up to this much if we need to. You know, in the contracting business, it's like, oh, if we can get up to this much, we're going to try to change order, this and that, whatever. So, with that in mind, I'm just hoping that we can stay within that original number, because for the fact they've done it before, I know what to expect probably, so I'm hoping that we can, I'm hoping that Public Works staff will work hard to keep them within the 118, so we don't.
Yeah, absolutely. I'd want to give you every assurance that, that we will definitely make every effort on that front. The other thing is, too, with these things, is, you know, sometimes the regulations and whatnot change, or the parameters change, and, and so that can be some unforeseen, you know, additional work that might be required, that would, you know, may need some of the contingency. But, but yeah, absolutely, as staff, we, we definitely want to, you know, try to minimize any contingency use, so.
So, is this something that could be, that we should be budgeting in future? Because if we're expecting to have the permit due every five years, can we start maybe, or would it have to come back to council every time, or can we just start billing into the, the budget for the, for the plant?
Do you want to, Gene?
I'd like to make that, respond to that, and make a couple of other responses. As far as, it, it's in the budget, we have to, on a contract, we have a purchasing policy that requires us to go out and get contracts and, and bids, RFPs, you know, competitive and stuff. So, even though it's in the budget, we can't spend it until we get a contract and approval from council.
Okay.
The other end of it, this price for this one, what's been proposed in 215, I was I was involved in that application, and we set up our process after that to get ready for the next one, the 220, in 2020. And the value of this is about half the cost of what it costs us back in 215.
Really?
Because we've kept the data up, we've kept everything online, we've done everything needed to be with this permit. So, it's a much reduced cost, just by what we've done internally. And as far as getting a favor, you know, West Yost being part of it, well, they see what we've done. And we did provide that information to the other firms that we do have this, you know, that the application would be easier than a lot of applications out there. And, you know, but it's just, we didn't get any, you know, any submittals from there. So, we've taken the chance, and we've taken the corrective actions to make sure we didn't see another $200,000 application.
Okay.
That's good to know.
Thanks for your answers. Last thing was a clerical, there was just a clerical error in the contract. I think it was the contract itself where it listed the address for Yost and Associates, and it said David, California, instead of Davis with an S. Just caught it, so I don't know. Maybe just correct that. Not that there's a town of David, but that's all I have on this subject. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion?
I have a comment on the same thing. Mr. Clarkson, we sent these RFP from 10 or nine companies, right? And we don't get anything back from them, right? What kind of action, on the behalf of the department, did you guys approach them or ask them? What happened is the company already working with us, they have the information. It's easy for them to give the price. The company, when always, when we report, giving these information to the different companies, they can have more information from this tab, more information from this tab. I'm not talking about, this might be a very good deal. But we need to do something with the cost comparison. And I know, I don't know what kind of your department protocol, did you guys approach them and tell them, okay, this we needed, what information you guys, we can provide them, so we can some kind of... Or they just, you guys make your effort, and they don't give you a response at all.
Well, what we did is we put a comprehensive RFP proposal together, and it listed all the tasks, all the tasks that you see that are in the contract were tasks that we developed. And so, it's a footprint for any professional engineering group out there to follow through and respond and see what we have. We also provided the documents that we had and the list of files. They can also get on, we gave them the addresses for the C WICs and our wastewater discharge permit number, so they could get on the website, the state website, to see the type of requirements that we have. That we included our current permit, we included everything, and then we submitted it out. Did we knock on doors and say, hey, please give us a submittal? No, we didn't do that. You know, you have to wait, you have to treat everybody fairly. But then when it, when our period ended, we're going, okay, we only got one. Let's go and talk to everybody and see why they didn't submit. And, or see if they were ready to submit, but they missed the deadline. If we had something like that, we could have probably extended something, but we didn't get anything. And when you're looking at this type of permit process, when it was commented on, do we have the staff to do the permit? Well, we would need to have some subcontractors to help us on stuff. But if you're doing something once every five years, you're going to miss something. And you want the people who are doing this on a routine basis. Doesn't matter what type of profession you're in, I think things get old after five years. And so, you want the people who are going to be doing it all the time. And as Mr. Selling indicated, that there's a possibility that some of these firms, just their workload was just too great, and they couldn't do it, or they lost their key staff to other staff. And so, we didn't get a good feel that if we went out for an RFP again and we knocked on doors, if we were going to get a response. It cost about $25,000 to put these together, especially if you go through an interview process and all.
So, to clarify on Mr., our Councilmember Sandu's question, you did, we did contact the other people and said, why didn't you? And none of those responses, is what you told me, none of those responses of reasons why they bid on it weren't because they didn't get the adequate information, or they missed the deadline, or anything like that. It's just that they just, they had, you didn't get any of that answer, response from them.
No, we didn't. No, we didn't. Yeah, I've put this RFP together before at other places, and it's a terrific footprint. And we use it in engineering with our RFPs. It tells them the task and provides the information for anything. So, when we do get an RFP, when we get proposals in, we just go right through our RFP and match them up to each of the proposals. It's really a nice footprint for people to submit in. But we didn't get anything saying that they didn't understand what was going on.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Any other discussion? Any public comment? All right. Adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with West Yost Associates in the amount of $118,640 for the report of waste discharge for the wastewater treatment plant, to authorizing a 10% contingency in the amount of $11,864, and three, authorizing the city manager and public works director to execute a contract amendments within the approved contingency amount pursuant to the city's procurement procedures manual. Can I get a motion?
Moved.
Councilmember Campion, a second?
Second.
Councilmember Lozano, roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Lamson.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. All right. Subject six, award of contracts for the Golden Heights well rehabilitation. I believe that was also Vice Mayor Farmer.
Hello again. Sorry, I have these questions, but I just, a lot of this is just for clarification of the public, so. So, to understand, so, and it's very educational to read these staff reports. You know, us as being new council, you know, are not always privy to every little thing in public work, so it's a learning curve for us too. So, but, you know, I just feel like it's my duty to, you know, try to educate the public too, so we can try to be as transparent. So, basically, if I understand the staff report correctly, we have two deep wells, one of them being the Golden Heights well, and we have six backup wells. The Golden Heights well specifically that we're talking about here is the primary source of our city water, ranging from 57 to 90%, depending on the season. And we have found a problem with the pump in this well. And so, we have sent out requests to three companies, responded with two companies, I believe, out of three. CPM is the one that came in the cheapest. We also feel that they are the most adequate to do this. So, I looked over the estimate that they provided, and what it looks like is, it looks like pretty much they're going to just rebuild the whole pump. I mean, that's kind of what the parts list looks like. So, although it says that we don't know what's wrong exactly till they pull it out, and there was some discussion about, you know, not really being sure what it needs, I would assume that if it's a full rebuild, it really doesn't matter what it needs. They're just going to rebuild the whole thing. Is that what we're doing?
Well, we are going to replace the shaft. We're going to replace spider bearings and stuff as it goes down. The pump itself is down 300 feet into the aquifer. And we don't know if there's any need to rebuild that until we pull it out. We do have money in there to rebuild bearings of the bowls and stuff that the pump has. And so, when we pull it out, if rebuilding is, if we don't need to rebuild it, we're just going to put it back in. If we do need to rebuild it, we have the money there to do it.
Okay.
We can't tell till we pull it out. We know we're replacing the shaft and the spider bearings. We know we're doing that.
Okay. So, the second, you might as well just step there, Mark, because you can probably knock these off really quick for me. So, this is a joint thing here. A part of it is the repair. And the second thing we're approving as part of this is to have a consultant come in and do a well rehabilitation, which was something we were going to be doing, looking at doing 18 months from now. But because of the work needed now, we feel like it would be cost-effective to do this now together as a joint thing, because it would cost more to put everything back together than have to go back in. So, with that being said, I saw some things in the contract from Yost and from CPM where it says, you know, Yost's contract is going to be X amount contingent, that the people that are pulling the equipment out do X, you know, it was like the laundry list, and then the same thing with CPM. So, I just want to be sure that, like, you know, like I said, I've been in construction business where it's like, you know, two subcontractors. It's like, well, my price is going to be this, as long as this guy does these list of things, and he says the same. And then somehow, something doesn't get done, and then this guy, well, he didn't do those parts, and that's going to cost more. So, I just want to be sure, I'm sure you guys are the liaison, are going to be sure that everybody is working smoothly together, because this is a joint effort between these two firms to do this. So, I just want to be sure that, you know, we're focusing on that. And that... So, the last part, which you answered earlier, but I want to clarify, because this was an email I got from someone. The staff report mentioned, in a letter from Yost, so it was their letter, not from us, that they'd said that when we installed the deep well in 2011, that they had done some initial testing for various elements and things. And the one for the arsenic was at 2, 6.5 micrograms per liter, which was under the 10, which is the acceptable level. And then it didn't really refer to anything else about regular testing. And then it said in 2015, there was a level of 11.
Level of what?
A level of 11 micrograms per liter of arsenic, which is over the 10 acceptable. So, my question to you when I talked to you today was, you know, is that the last time it was tested and we were over? Can you explain that that's not the case, that we actually test far more frequently?
Yes, first of all, from West Yost's contract, they should have indicated that that was Monterey Bay well. It's a different well, where we blend two wells together. And the Monterey Bay well was at 10 to 11 parts back in November of that period. We test monthly for metals. We have this series of tests that the state requires us to do. And we do things weekly, monthly, quarterly, semi-annual, annual. And it's hundreds and hundreds of samples that we do throughout the city, throughout our wells and stuff. And arsenic is one that we do on a, we actually do in-house weekly, and then we go out to certified labs monthly on that. And all of that information is reported to the state. And so, our drinking water, since I've been here, we've had one hit on bacterial, but nothing else. Everything else has met the primary standards and the secondary standards that is required by the EPA.
And so, this part of this resolution we're going to be approving is for this rehabilitation. So, that, basically, in a nutshell, rehabilitation is basically, they're going to try to, you know, assess this well and try to, you know, give their input and consulting on how to make this well more efficient, whether that means, you know, I don't, I don't understand well technology that much, but I kind of tried to research it a little bit. So, they're basically going to say, we need to alter this or that, or maybe do whatever to make it where it's giving us a pure product. We, the goal is here to get better quality water if we need to.
Absolutely. We have several lenses that are deep, 1,500 feet down. And we know when we did the initial testing, we had some really low parts per billion on the arsenic. And then when the well came online, it was a little higher than we anticipated. So, we knew, or I knew, when I saw the results, one day we'll go back in there and see which lens that higher arsenic is coming from and seeing if we can isolate that and get better water. It is meeting. That well meets everything. But because we have another well that's on the edge, if we can lower this one down a little bit, now we've got another well that can blend in together and provide, continue to provide great water.
Just to clarify, this well is our primary source. So, it's, I mean, it is very, it's very important that we get this thing taken care of and addressed, because if not, this was to go offline, we, there was some verbiage in there about having to rely on some of our municipal wells, which are not producing stuff to levels that we're supposed to have. And so, it would be a huge, could be a huge domino effect of what could happen if we lose this well, right?
That's correct, Vice Mayor Farmer. Basically, you know, yeah, as Mark noted in the staff report notes, I mean, this thing's producing 50 to 90% of the city's water. And so, there is a time constraint that we're kind of under here. We're trying to take advantage of, since we're going to have the pump out to check it and see what repairs we may need to make, let's go ahead and have them see if we can isolate that arsenic, you know, lens or two, whatever it may be, at the same time, before the peak water, you know, demand period starts May 1st, is historically, I think, what our data shows. So, yeah, and back to your comment about the two subs, you know, that's why we want to make sure that there's very close coordination here, because we do have this time constraint, and this is our major, you know, supply well, so.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mark.
All right. Mr. Palazzo, I have a question. Since Vice Mayor Farmer's brought up possibly going over contract twice now, what is the procedure when the contract exceeds what's been approved? Does it come back to council?
One way of the contingency, if it exceeds that contingency, then it'd have to come back to council.
Come back to council, okay. Thank you. Any other discussion? Any public comment? All right. Adopt a resolution, one, authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with commercial pump and mechanical incorporated for a contract in the amount of $68,914.64 for repairs to the equipment at the Golden Heights Deep Well. Two, authorizing the city manager to execute task order number three to the West Yost Associates master agreement to provide consulting services in the rehabilitation of the Golden Heights Deep Well for a contract in the amount of $58,500. Three, appropriating $140,000 to the annual well rehabilitation capital improvement project, CIP number 58H, which includes $12,585.36 contingency. And four, authorizing the city manager to execute a contract amendments for changes in the scope of work, which do not exceed the total project appropriation. Can I get a motion?
Will make a motion.
Councilmember Sandu, a second?
Second.
Vice Mayor Farmer. Roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Lamson.
Aye. If it's okay with the council, I would like to move the city clerk's report so we can appoint to the commissions, as they're so patiently waiting out there. Is that all right? Okay. City clerk's report, subject, consideration of appointment of representation to the city council committees, commissions, and boards.
Thank you. Tonight, we have Tina Hubert, executive assistant in the administration department, who's going to give the agenda report.
Thank you, Tina.
Good evening, mayor and council members. At the February 19, 2019 city council meeting ordinance number 201901 was adopted, amending the GALT municipal code regarding qualifications for committee and commission members. The qualifications allowed up to two members to reside within the GALT Joint Union High School District. And of those two, the GALT Youth Commission may allow one member at large. Recruitment under the new qualifications was initiated on February 20. The notice soliciting applications was advertised in the newspaper, placed on the city's website, and on social media sites. Applications received from the December 18, 2018 city council meeting through current date, which was through yesterday, are included. Appointments made tonight would be effective March 21, 2019. And there is no motion necessary, as these are individual council member appointments.
Thank you.
So, for the beautification committee, there's two vacancies. Vice Mayor Farmer and Councilmember Lozano each have an appointment. The applicants are Darlene Brown, I apologize, Geoah Parish, and Gail Weber. And so, it goes to Vice Mayor Farmer.
Would like to appoint Gail Weber to the beautification committee.
And Councilmember Lozano.
I'd like to appoint Darlene Brown to the beautification committee.
Okay. On commission on aging, there are four vacancies. Mayor Lamson, Vice Mayor Farmer, Councilmember Lozano, and Councilmembers Sandu each have an appointment. The applicants are Sherilyn Khan, Marie Hall withdrew her application, Andrea Johnson, Suzanne Nelson, Penny Neimeyer, and Alvin Roberts. Mayor Lamson.
I would like to put back in, because her term was shortened as she moved across Twin Cities Road, Andrea Johnson, please.
Vice Mayor Farmer.
I would like to appoint Alvin Roberts.
Councilmember Lozano.
I'd like to appoint Penny Neimeyer.
And Councilmember Sandu.
I would like to appoint Suzanne Nelson.
All right. GALT Youth Commission, there is one vacancy for Vice Mayor Farmer, and the applicants are Jennifer Collier, Esperanza Johnson, Teresa McCord, Sherilyn Miller, and Sam Mitchell. Vice Mayor Farmer.
Would like to appoint Jennifer Collier to the GALT Youth Commission.
And Parks and Recreation Commission, there's one vacancy, Councilmember Sandu. And the applicants are Carrie Graham, Kelly Keegie, Teresa McCord, and Gail Weber.
I would like to point Carrie Graham to the Parks and Rec.
Carrie Graham?
Carrie Graham.
Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Tina.
Thank you, everyone that came for that, and congratulations, new commission members.
Thank you for everybody being so patient with that. It was a long process. And it was, some of our commissions and committees didn't even have a quorum, because they were waiting. But I think it was, I think it was worth the wait.
All right. Do we have any scheduled matters? No, we do not. Any regular calendar? Yes. Approve moving forward with wastewater treatment plant site as preferred location for the new transit operation and maintenance center. Mr. Palazzo?
That'll be Mr. Selling.
And I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Clerk, then.
Mayor, city council, long time no see here. We have a, we had a request, there's a couple of really nice timing issues that occurred just recently, in the last two months, and one of them was new council coming in, wondering what's going on with the transit. We met with SACOG to discuss our, our, our schedule and getting the, the stuff completed, and we've got some new people over at the school district, which may become or may not become a part of this. It's just, it's still in the air. So there, but it's good timing. We also have given you an update here, but we are looking at having the, the facility for you to adopt a resolution approving us move forward at the wastewater treatment plant to start looking at it, to look at the SEQA, the documents, and all the things that are involved with that, at that process. Lot of words up here, but this is a project update. We, we received a PTMI SEA grant, three point three million dollars. That was for construction only. We went out and we purchased some property behind the parks, existing parks maintenance. City began all the environmental and preliminary design. We, we did RFPs, and we hired a GHD to do the work, and they had some subs, environmental subs and such. And I came into it right after, right before the, right in two sixteen, I started becoming a part of it, looking at, at the environmental, looking at, at where it was at, and I started questioning what was going on with it. I started talking with SACOG, and then I looked at the budget that we had. We had a budget of just under five million from three different entities. And, and so went to SACOG and said, we've got to find a better location. And to come in and convince and talk with the city council at that time indicated that we had a project of about fourteen million dollars. It was a wish list that just kept growing and growing. And, and we were not going to be able in Public Works or in Parks and Recreation to come up with our share that was needed to fund the facility. So working with SACOG, they worked really well with us to not lose the money. They ended up embedding it in their other projects and stuff. And as we met with them a couple of months ago, we gave them our schedule, it still meets in the timing that they have, meaning that in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two is when we start taking the construction fees, you know, from them, or, or putting in invoices for it. And in two eighteen, we, or two seventeen, what we also did when we knew we were going to go to a different site, started looking at around land, different land out by the MSC, out by the Walker Park and a few other areas. We talked with the school district a little bit on it. And, and then we've come down, as I've indicated in the last couple of months, it's decision time to start moving forward with what site we're going to have. So just a little bit more background, the, the site, this is the PD right here, in the MSC Industrial Drive, and, and Elm's coming in here, and this is where the parks maintenance is right now currently. So, so all of the environmental, all of the preliminary engineering was done on this site. It was really constrained environmentally for growth, everything. It was just a really small, tight site. You have residential along this side, and, and back on the backside here, where, where it's really hard to access anyway, because that, that street back there is, is really narrow. You have, you have confinement because of the tracks here, and this little area where we were going to move in and out of that with buses, with dozens of buses, is going to be really tough on Elm there. That was going to be a, a tough one. And we were probably going to have to put a signal. So that fourteen million dollars is, is probably not the total cost that it was going to take us to put something here that was going to make it constrained, you know, immediately. So, so as we started looking at other stuff, the school weighed in that they may have been interested. And over, over on the east side, they have a little area that's about two and a half, three acres, where they have their high school and their elementary school buses in the site. Again, they, they're constrained, because they have residential all around here. They own this property that they're on, and, and they thought it was, you know, it could be beneficial for them to move to another site. And, and we've also talked potentially with other agencies, SACOG and meeting with RT, they thought that they would be looking at, at some regional sites for their systems, especially when stuff starts falling into this electrification that has to happen with buses. Did a citywide search, I know this is backing up a little bit, but, but we look at, at kind of, what, what do we have to do? What are our goals, that we have to have? Everything from the timing, our potential partners, all the way down to that current and future regulatory requirements. I mean, it, it just, you know, where are we going to fit it in? You've got Walker Park over in this area. We've got the, the Parks Building that was in here, MSC over in here. The school district has their facility up in here. And way up here in the corner, we'll get to that one in a second. But, so we looked around to see where, where it would be good for growth, where it would not impact our property taxes and other things. But we did look at a few appraisals and stuff. We looked at the piece that was potentially for sale behind, this is the MSC and the, and the police department right here. These are for sale, these lots right in here are for sale. We had an appraisal done on this back in two seventeen. We talked with the foundry owner. They wanted to keep this part where the foundry was, and, and we did a little schematic, in-house schematic, of just showing how the buses would lay out, how they would come in and out at Amador Drive or Spans Drive. It just depended, there's a myriad of different ways we could do this. It was, it was just, this is one of the layouts I'm just showing right now. We kept looking around. Getting back to that little corner in the map, over the course of the time that I've been here in the last seven years, the wastewater treatment plant site's been looked at a couple of different ways. There was a, there was an idea of putting a transfer station right here back in two fourteen. There was just a year and a half ago, when, when we started negotiating with Cal Waste over the new contract, they were looking at having twenty or thirty acres. And we looked at this site right here, potentially, to have them lease it from us. And so there was a lot of, you know, over the time, the last six or seven years, we've been looking at this site, and we did a few improvements that would make it, when we did the, when we did the wastewater treatment plant improvements, we improved the road along here, just not only for our equipment, but if there was going to be a heavy use site on that, because it, it was being looked at pretty hard. Well, now we're looking at it pretty hard. And, and this area, going back just a couple, for the, for the people who don't know where we're at, this is Twin Cities, the roundabouts are right here, and right as you cross the railroad tracks, there's a little driveway that goes up to a three hundred plus acre parcel that the city owns, and it is in the city limits. It's zoned, it's industrial zoned. The planner's not here, so I'm going to pretend I'm a planner. It appears to potentially meet the requirements of the general plan and the use content of this area.
Very good.
Very good. Is that good? Is that good?
Sounds good.
And, and so it's a lot of room for growth. This area right here, a little over nine acres, nine and a half acres, right next to the Ag Building that we have out here, that the school district rents from us to have their hogs and sheep out there. And, and really good access on Twin Cities. We also have a parcel, a forty-foot wide parcel along here, and this is Christiansen Road right in this area. Twin Cities is here. We own this back piece back here, plus we own an area up here for wildlife that is, is a reserve for the Swenson Hawk. The gun range that we have, the new west side gun range is right here, and the old gun range is right here. So just to kind of show you, this, this here is a field, a fifty-acre field. These are lagoons along here, and all of these are other fields that we use currently for agriculture. And this nine and a half acres that we've identified, it's going to meet a lot of our needs, growth-wise. The transit facility that is proposed is only going to need about two and a half to three acres, really a small amount for, because we don't have money from other departments right now to add into this. But if we were able to get something in the future, we could, we could definitely develop this massively from fuel standards for bus systems. This, this is doubling everything that we have, everything that the school district has, everything that we could see that could happen in a thirty or forty-year horizon, just kind of showing you all the space that we have in between this. It's a, it's a pretty good-sized site. If we were just doing the transit facilities, we would probably just have this area right in here. If, if the city ended, ended up moving parks, Public Works out to a site, there's plenty of room here to do that. Getting back to the wastewater plant site, the growth of the wastewater plant comes out this way, right into this field right here, for ultimate grow out, you know, growth of the, of the plant if, you know, and when in the future that we have to expand that plant. And most of us won't be here when the build-out is, well, some of us won't be. But I was told that I had to be here till I was ninety or something. I don't remember, something like that. But, so we've got a lot of growth in here, built in, in our master plan that we had of the facility, that can come in, down in this way. We need about a hundred acres to continue doing ultimate discharge of our sludge, because we amend the soils out here. We need about a hundred acres. Currently, we have about a hundred and seventy acres under production. And, and so we have, I, I won't say it's a surplus, but if we release some acreage to do some key items for the city, it, it would benefit, it would not hurt the wastewater treatment plant or its goals of the plant, and it could potentially help the city. The project schedule that we're having right now, we need direction for a site to start looking at it. We have a contract right now with GHD. They were put on hold. They spent about two hundred thousand of their original seven hundred thousand dollar contract. They put on hold until we decide a new site that we're going to go. We need to do environmental, whatever site we select, we need to do environmental, we need to do, do the preliminary engineering, we need to come back for, for direction and discussion and approval of environmentals and all of that other things that go on. We, in about a year from now, we should be starting the design. Year after that, should start construction. And that will meet our timeline as required by SACOG to get our funding, keep our funding safe. So asking you to move forward, and if there's any questions.
I have a question. So you didn't mention, we own this property, so we don't have to purchase it, correct?
Correct.
You didn't mention the price of the, some of the other properties you were considering, or maybe I missed it?
No, I didn't mention the prices, but it was in the million-dollar range.
Oh, okay.
So, it, it was industrial, you know, and good prices there. And the one facility right behind us, that was total of about six acres, including the four little lots and stuff, and it added up. And, you know, I got a sticker shot, because it's like when you walk up to a car and you want to buy a brand-new car, and it has too many zeros there, you don't pay attention to the front end. It's too big.
Right.
You know, and that's what happened here with the other site that we had already selected, we didn't have enough money for. And so going to, to a, a new site, you know, can we, can we use that money to purchase the site? We can. But it's, it's money that, you know, I mean, I mean, we can do that if that's the direction that we're given, to find another site.
So with this, we can go ahead without the school district, if they're not interested or while they're trying to gather their money. I'm seeing some yes nods. But it does leave room for expansion. If they, if they decide, they get, they can somehow come up with the funds and want to move out there with this, and if the schools expand as we build a little bit, they might need more buses that, than they can handle.
Correct. When you, when you look at, like for the school bus, if we can get them in a simple MOU that says that they're interested, not that they're dedicated into it, but they're interested, there would be some cost to include them in our master planning of the site. It would be a minimal cost, probably well under twenty thousand dollars. We'd have to assess their fleet, their needs, and, and put it in, in a system. We would include them on all of our review and how we lay out the site, because we'd like to share facilities. It's going to keep the cost low for everybody if you share the facilities, especially when it expands. It's like our fleet, our fleet would use one wash facility, but we'd be set, we'd set it up to do a second wash, pretty easy, whether it's the school district, RT, or whoever. But by getting somebody in here early, if we can, by summer sometime, and if they're interested, they just would be in all of our preliminary engineering meetings, environmental meetings, getting their input. And, and, but we would build the site to what our needs are, and be able to easily commendate future growth in that area, whether it's our, our agency, you know, our divisions or outside agencies. And, and a nice one about this, we have to electrify, you know, it's already in, in the rules on, on so many years, you know, so much of your fleet at so much year period. And the first, first bump, I think, is in about six years from now, that we've got to start electrifying our fleet out here, buying new electric vehicles. When you're in confined areas like the industrial zone and stuff, you have to go underground with the wire, and upgrade that wire costs big money, you know, to, to get the amperes that you need. What preliminary from, from SMUD, I have not talked with them, but that was through RT, they said that they, that SMUD wanted to make sure that the sites never exceeded seventy-seven, where they come out with that number, I don't know, but seventy-seven buses for electrification. So we have to be cognizant of that, that this site can't get overrun with electric vehicles. But I have not met with SMUD on it. But this is a really good site, because all the overheads are down on, and are down on Twin Cities, be really easy to upgrade. When we've upgraded the treatment plant in Horse Park, really easy to, to upgrade that, because it's all overheads, so.
Well, I know Kurt and I were on the council, we've been talking about this for a few years now, and a million dollars for some property that we don't have to spend, sounds like you've made some progress. I think we're going to have some other discussion?
Yeah, so playing devil's advocate here, this is an important decision, obviously, because you say this site could be something we're going to use for a long period of time. So I wanted to, before I ask some questions that I have for you, Mark, I wanted to establish first off, that this project, to be clear, is not contingent on the school district being a part of it.
Correct. We need to move forward.
Okay. And, and, I mean, so it's like, it doesn't really matter if we have them, or it'd be like ideal if we did? I'm trying to, I'm trying to consider how much, how much it would sweeten the deal if they were a part of it. I mean, ultimately, is that something we want? Or i- it's like, if, great if they want to, but it's not? I ask because, I ask this because I know CAST has been approached with this, but I, I spoke, I've spoken to board members from elementary and high school, and they, there, there's been like a presentation to them, but I feel like they really haven't had a chance to just kind of chew on it a little bit and, and talk amongst themselves and come back and say, yeah, we, we like this site, or we like this site, or whatever. So what I'm saying is, I, I just want to clarify that basically what we're doing is we're going to be moving forward, really not getting input from them on both, on both boards, that they like one side or the other. Because to me, one, logistics could play a big piece. I mean, this, the site that you tend to be advocating for, which you feel is the best site, you know, is the furthest from the city. It's four miles from where we're at right now. It's like a twelve-minute drive. I've looked at, I've did the logistics on it. So if you're talking about the proximity for the school district use, now for our use, it's probably different, but for a school district, you're talking about bringing, you know, having buses have to drive, you know, from the utmost corner of the city into town, so I don't know how that's going to affect logistics as far as their fuel and, and all that kinds of stuff. From a city standpoint, if that's going to be our yard, so that's where our vehicles will be stored, right? Is that?
Correct.
So I, I, I thought the other, so about two weeks ago, I had a parks worker, I forget if it was Parks or Public Works, I forget, came out and was doing some work down in Old Town on something, and then he left, and he was gone for, you know, a good half hour, and he came back and said, well, where'd you go? I had to go grab some tools from the yard, which is just right over on Amador. So I started thinking, well, if people are running back and forth to the yard, I mean, you know, having the furthest point is definitely going to play in logistics and timing, you know, man-hours of driving to go out and get equipment, to go out and fuel up or do whatever, it's the furthest most point. So I've just been thinking about that. So I, I feel like if we are interested in bringing them in as a partner, and you say it's not contingent that we do, but if we are interested in them being a possible partner in this, I feel like we're kind of jumping ahead and not really giving them a chance to at least give their initial blessing about, yeah, we like that site, that's, that we would be, we would be interested if we had the money or whatever, we could talk more about that later, but yeah, we're initially, that would be a good site for us. Or no, if you're going to pick that site, we're probably going to be out. I mean, that could be a factor for us. Other things would be, as she mentioned, the land, you own the land, so that's great. But I also am thinking that if you use the treatment plant, I've been, I was just down that road like a week ago. I drove that whole part of the treatment plant, and that road, obviously, you're going to have to improve that road at some point, so there's going to be a cost in bringing, bringing that road up to, up to, especially if we're going to have buses or anything like that on it eventually, right? The whole, along the tracks there?
No.
No? You could drive buses on that as is right now?
You, it's, it is set up, you can drive a highway on this. Because we had anticipated that Cal Waste was gonna build a, a system back here. So we did, we did the sub base set up to where all that Cal Waste would have to do is come in and put a couple inches AC over it. We've already done this sub. So we, we've, we've looked at some heavy truck traffic, plus we have cranes that, that move on that road too. So this road coming in is, is actually ready to take those light, buses or light equipment compared to what, what we had planned on. I didn't mean to stop you there, but.
No, no, you're fine, that's fine, that's fine, yeah. So, so obviously, you know, having the land already is gonna save us. I mean, me looking at it, I mean, the foundry site looks good to me too. Obviously, I'm just, just me, I'm not, you know, an engineer like yourself and have looked at all the things, but it seems like it would be more centrally located. Of course, I know you mentioned there's a price tag with that, but I'm just, again, I think I'm just kinda hung up on the logistics of it. I feel like, you know, we're in, I feel like we're kinda pressured to do something, but I, I don't wanna make the wrong decision. I know there's been council talking about this long before I was around, but, but now, I mean, obviously, you just said yourself that you guys had your eyes focused on something else, and now you've switched it up, so it's not like minds haven't been changed. The, the property that you said we purchased behind the existing parks maintenance?
Yes.
Off Amador? So behind the existing, yeah, that, so that, so we own that?
Right here, yes, we do.
So what would we do? Would we just try to maybe sell it or something, or maybe just keep it in case we need it for something else later? What would be the thought, because?
I haven't given much thought to that. We can't really, we can't really do anything with it, residential.
That property is designated residential, and I would consider that infill property, that we could probably find somebody to develop that.
So there is a chance we could definitely off that property and offset?
Absolutely, yeah.
Of something else. And that's, and that, how much is that, six acres?
Yes.
And how much is the, how many, how, what's the size of the foundry site?
The foundry site, including, because we had to, we had to look at.
And I don't believe the foundry site is an option at this point, the, you know, we.
It's being presented as an option.
No. It was an, an idea that we pursued and was talking to the property owners, and they, I basically ended the discussion, they haven't.
Why is it in the staff report?
Shows the history of, of where the project has gone and all the evaluation that's gone into it.
And, and the other thing that I certainly recommend, the wastewater treatment plant, you know, when you're looking at, you know, development within, you know, your community, you have taken up commercial or industrial property with the government, you know, bus facility use, you're not generating jobs or, or a tax base off of that property, you know, where the wastewater treatment plants already, you know, within that government use, you know, zoned properly, you know, for something like this. And, you know, it's, you know, I think, you know, a good, good location and good use, you know, for a facility like this.
Okay. Well, I can, I can, I can see that, I mean, obviously, you guys are heavily recommending this one site, so the other ones, I mean, I miss, I miss, maybe I misconstrued the staff report as, these were, you know, things we were looking at, so obviously, I wasted a lot of time looking at stuff for no reason, if we're only looking at one site. But, so I just keep going back to, again, I feel like, you know, I mean, I guess there's a transportation meeting with the elementary school on Thursday. I just feel like, I, I mean, it would be nice to have some input from them at all, just like initially, like, yeah, we're interested, that's a good stop spot, that, you know, let us know if we can maybe get involved. But right now, I, I'm hearing a mix of like, no, we're not interested at all, to, we might be, but nobody's really kind of anything, and.
Maybe I can chime in on that, just, I don't mean to interrupt you, but we did have a cast meeting.
Yeah.
And this was the, the topic of discussion at that cast meeting, Mayor Lampton and Council Member Campion were at that meeting. We had members from each of the boards there, along with the superintendents. I've been in discussions with the superintendents on this, you know, for well over a year. We, you know, introduced it to the board. I believe the elementary school district talked about it at their last meeting, and I had an opportunity to follow up with superintendent shower, you know, to find out what that discussion was. In our meeting, we discussed, you know, to kind of bring it back to their boards, you know, once I have some direction tonight from the council, we'll go back, I'll go back to the superintendents and work with them on, you know, kind of a, an outline of an MOU type, and then, and hopefully, you know, be invited back to their boards to do the same presentation and hopefully get some direction from them.
And so I, I get that. But I think, I, I'm trying, let me clarify something, you just said some comments. So one thing is, you're asking us to approve direction about this site, and then you're saying go back to the school districts and get an MOU. So that kind of is kind of the opposite of what I was just saying, where we'd like to get input from them first. I'm aware of the cast meeting, I actually spoke to all the people that were in the cast meeting from both the elementary and the other, and these are the people that tell me, yeah, it was presented to us, but we didn't really, you know, go back and say, yeah, we liked that, or had a chance to go over it. These are the people that I just spoke to, as a matter of fact, I spoke to two of them just this morning. So I think there's a miscommunication about what you think they're, they feel about it. They've, they've said, yeah, they've mentioned it to us, but we've not discussed it amongst our boards. And if you've been talking to them for a year, superintendent, that's not, like I said, I'm speaking to all the board members on both boards, and they're saying, you know, they're not acting like this has been an ongoing thing and this site has been presented. So again, I'm just, feel like we're putting the cart before the horse a little bit, and, you know, the council can do what we want tonight, but I just feel like, if, you know, if I'm gonna be partners with somebody, if I ask Mr. Sandu, you know, go and partners with me, and, and I said, but I'm gonna do it without you, no matter if I want, you're gonna be a partner or not, and he says, well, I might be interested, and then I go secure a lease on a building and say, this is where our business is gonna be, he might be like, well, why'd you do that without me? I, I mean, I don't like that site. So I, again, I just, I'm hung up on this, feel like we're pushing forward without their input.
Yeah, I understand that, and I think, you know, what we're looking at is best interest and option for the city at, at this point. I think it's a great idea to partner and do joint use facilities. I, I think in the long run, it's gonna save all of our jurisdictions, you know, dollars and efficiencies, you know, especially if, you know, we're heading towards electrical buses and, and trying to, you know, pull that type of power. You know, what I know about the city, that, you know, this is probably the best location, you know, for setting up a facility like that. But I think, you know, the decision in front of the council tonight is, you know, what is the best interest of our organization, of our city, you know, moving forward? You know, we've been kind of bouncing around on this, we, we own this property, we don't have to spend a year in, in trying to negotiate and try and, you know, acquire, you know, some other property, you know, from the city. You know, let's move forward on this site, you know, we'll, you know, court the school districts and, and see, you know, if they wanna participate, this site is a great site because we can expand or contract that facility, you know. If they wanna join us, then I think that's great, and we can, you know, start working. They would have to secure funding. You know, we have a funding source, and, and we have a deadline on that, you know, 2021. You know, we need to be under construction and, and, you know, spending that money in 2022, you know, have this construction completed. It may take till 2022 before a school district can, you know, figure out their funding to come out and, and, and participate in that facility.
Do we have a budget for this? I'm sorry, Kurt, go ahead.
I, I was just gonna say, in the cast meeting, I, I mean, there was no, there was no ask for, for, for a firm commitment. It was simply, look at, this, this looks like where the city has to go. This is the property we have, this is the deadline we're under, and if you're interested, you know, certainly, we would entertain, you know, accommodating your needs. But I, I, I think maybe we're getting a little hung up on, you know, trying to, to, to work with other jurisdictions to the, to the extent that it's gonna be detrimental to us, particularly with this funding, and we have a funding deadline if we're going to, to make a move. You know, I, we've looked at all these different sites, and, and, you know, Paige has been involved as well, and, and when it comes right down to it, yeah, maybe it's a little bit far out of town, but there's nothing available in town that we own. Anything like the manager says that we're going to purchase, there's two things. One, it's gonna cost additional money, which can't go towards, you know, concrete, underground buildings and facilities. And then, secondly, you'll have a tax base loss on anything that is not currently owned by the city, because obviously, we don't pay property tax. So I, you know, I've looked at it, I, I look at it from that point of view, and I think it's a pretty easy decision for us tonight, you know, at least for me. And it doesn't close the door on the school districts. You know, I understand, it may take them some time. All we need to know is, hey, do you have an idea that maybe you might be interested? And if they do, then we can work to accommodate, you know, a future development with them. But I, I, I don't think we need to stop the process at this point because of their inability to make a decision.
No, and I agree, and I appreciate your comments, I know you're very versed on this.
Can I also clarify, it's three point eight miles from City Hall?
Okay.
So it's not that far. And do they stop at the rideshare? Don't, don't our buses stop at the rideshores? That's like right there too?
I, I think, so again, Kurt, I appreciate your input, and, you know, you've been involved in this a long time, and, and you were at the cast, so I, I get it, your knowledge. I think, I think some of my frustration comes back to the fact that I'm now, this will be twice that I've been asked to vote on something regarding the joint use transit yard, whereas I'm basically still waiting, tonight's really the first full presentation that I've been given at all, that really goes into the history of it. I know when we voted last meeting to bring Mr. Winkler back to work on it, we, I was promised to get some kind of briefing on this facility, which never happened. So now here I am voting again to make a commitment on something that could be, you know, for a fifty year, a hundred year commitment on a piece of property. So anyways, I, I think that, you know, originally, it was a joint use transit yard, was the way it was presented, now it's just transit yard. So obviously, the school district isn't really a factor, and so we're gonna move forward without them, and that's fine, I'm just trying to clarify that that's what, that's basically what we're doing, is just.
I don't think we're moving ahead without them, it's just that it's not requiring a commitment on their part today. It doesn't, and it doesn't close the door on them in the future. So I, 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 I think that, I think we need to characterize it correctly, because I don't want to, you know, have the school districts get the impression, well, city's moving ahead, they don't care what we think. That's not the case. We, we're making a decision based on what we believe is best for this city, for a variety of reasons, and that if we can accommodate them, then let's work towards that. But I don't think it's anything more than that.
Yeah, I, I get it, I get it.
And, and the other thing, you know, what we're asking tonight, it doesn't really commit the city, and we're asking to move forward, you know, we have environmental documents and everything else that need to be.
With that cost, there's a cost associated with that, yes.
There are.
Absolutely, right.
But we need to come back, and, you know, those are all have to, you know, come back to the council and, and be approved as well. So, you know, we need to, you know, figure out a site and.
The site behind our existing park, the one we, you've deemed it's not gonna work for us, obviously, that when that was the selected site way back when, there was money spent on that site to, to a point, and then it was decided that we weren't gonna go with that site, is that correct? There was money spent on that site?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so basically, what I'm trying to establish is, we are gonna spend money. I don't wanna spend a dollar unless we're absolutely sure, I mean, the council probably will vote tonight that we're gonna go with the site, but I'm still just against stressing that I'm asked to make a decision for, on something that I got three days ago. Just saying, you know, I, I like to be brief and stuff ahead of time, especially if something is, is, this is a big deal, this is a big deal, this is gonna be something great for the city, I'm sure it will be, all that kind of stuff, but again, that's my, my thing. So I'm done bringing up my concerns, you've all heard them, so.
I'd like to make a comment about this site. The first time I saw this site, I was asking out loud, who in the heck chose this site? This was a horrible site to choose, absolutely.
I can agree with that.
You know, because of the residential, because of all the bus noise, because of the traffic, but when you first look at it, you go, oh, we got the property at a low, you know, we can get the property at a low cost, and we can, we can squeeze everything in. But as I look at it as, as future for the city, there's no growth there, we're gonna have to put fifteen foot sound walls in, you know, right next to these homes. And, and maybe if we, if the, the people involved early had built a, a site like this, they would've saw that real quick. I've built a few of these, and you don't want them near people who wanna sleep in till six or seven in the morning, because we're getting out at four o'clock. You know, you know, our buses are leaving site at four and four thirty. And, and so, so even though there was a lot of effort put into it and a lot of stuff in it, it, it just was a site that was just constrained from the beginning.
So let me ask you one last, more poignant question, maybe the city manager.
There's been really good people working on this, it just, everybody was trying to make it fit into this little tiny shoe, you know?
So if the school district was here tonight, and they basically said, you know what? If you pick this site, I'm not interested, it would just not gonna work for us, would, would you still be saying, you know, well, it's too bad, it's unfortunate, but this is the absolute best, and we should move forward? Would you, would that be your recommendation to us?
Absolutely.
Absolutely, yes, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Terrific site. We, because we looked at it as a transfer station, we, we spent a lot of time when we were negotiating with other people, looking at the site, because terrific site for heavy, heavy equipment movement, it's out and away from everybody, the, the fumes, the noise, everything, there's not gonna be any growth around it for years to come, if ever, and, and it's terrific, terrific site. And we looked at, we did a lot of intensive looking at it, extensive looking at it, when these other proposals had thrown out onto this site. And when those fell through, especially the one back in November, or September, with Cal Waste, go, okay, this is, this, this, start looking at it from the point of view for the transit, because we were still an orphan looking for a place to sit down, you know, with our transit site.
Well, I appreciate all the input from city manager Kurt, thank you for your input, thank you for your questions, so, thanks.
Mayor, if there's any more council questions?
Yeah, is there any more council discussion or questions?
Just, just one, one thing that I don't think was touched on, I don't wanna rehash everything that we've talked about on it already, but I did ask a question about the, the vehicle trips per day, what, what the increase would be, and if there's a bus facility there with the school, a joint use facility, we're looking at probably, I think, a hundred and fifty, two hundred trips.
A hundred and thirty, I assume.
In addition to the thirty trips, if it were just a, so I just wanna be cognizant, I'm sure SEQA will, will address the roadway of Twin Cities as we move forward, and as, as an issue for the site. And then the, the last piece was just even reaching out further beyond the school districts in terms of regional partners, maybe the county or SAC RT, or any of those, you know, I would encourage staff to continue to explore those options, because the more hands that we can spread it out to, we have the ability to expand. You know, I think it, as we do that, the, the cost to our taxpayers is reduced, as you're splitting it up amongst the different agencies, so. And that's all I have. I, I appreciate, I, I do wanna make mention that, I do appreciate the PowerPoint being in the staff report, because it, it, we kinda know what we're getting, and the community gets, has kind of a, a preview, you know, being fully cognizant that we're not gonna make decisions based on a PowerPoint that we see without explanation, but it's just nice to have that ahead of time, to be able to review, so I appreciate that, Mark, getting that, putting that in there.
One comment on your SEQA and the documents that we go forward, we would be looking at this site being ultimate build out. We have a lot of trips right now because we have, we have a utilities maintenance yard up here with, that's staffed with just under twenty people, and with all of our equipment and all this comes in and out to all of our water and wastewater systems throughout the city. We do own this portion right here, there's a forty foot wide portion right here that's undeveloped, that we own it, it's a parcel that we own, and that's right where Chris Monroe is, so, so if the SEQA documents showed that the trips would be too great at this location, we would develop about a, about a twelve hundred foot, fourteen hundred foot roadway right here and have a four way stop right there.
I can imagine the vehicle trips being that, I, I mean, a residential subdivision's gonna generate more traffic than all of the buses that, that could be built, put there at ultimate build out. I mean.
Correct. Correct.
On the same site, so...
20 homes, 20 homes does 200.
Yeah, exactly, so, and there's a lot of capacity in Twin Cities Road, still today, so...
Thank you, council member Lozano?
Yeah, I have a few comments on this, first of all, Clarkson, thank you for giving us a very good presentation. I think that's, the location is much better than the other location, that's the only location is, can be effective, that the other location is very much in between the residential. My question is, you know, we are talking about with the school cast, I think Kurt might be more familiar with this, and how far with the school, I'm talking about, this is decision is best interest for the city, I totally understand this is best, but school is also part of the community. How far, how would effort we make, including city manager and Kurt might be no more than that, to approach the school district, what they want to come, or they want not, the thing is, I'm agree with my co-councilman, he want to make a decision, whatever is the best for the city, but if you give somebody opportunity, the other person be respected. So I just need to know how this school at this point, how you guys communicate, how far communicate, and what their answer on that.
I believe staffs, weren't we trying to coordinate a presentation for them?
We are, yeah, I talked to both superintendents and offered to come to the board meetings, offered Mr. Clarkson to come to the board meetings and do a presentation.
I really appreciate that, Mr. Clarkson.
Well, I think it'd be helpful for them to fully understand, you know, what level of commitment we're asking for, which is, I think, pretty minimal at this point.
So council member Sandu, I was at the meeting also, and they did express interest, of course, they, they're having a funding issue. The school district right now has 131, 137 bus trips every day out of that tight neighborhood, so this might be a better option for them, especially if the notch grows and there's another school put in, there'll be more buses, so they're going to have to do something eventually, but, you know, trying to generate the funding, and they haven't gone in front of the school board, so it hasn't been on, there's no action yet, so, but there's been discussion with superintendents, and, so not all the board members know yet because it hasn't been brought, because they don't want to break the Brown Act, so they're working on that, that was for Ashley.
So, Mr. Clarkson, how many buses do you say that if they, you could possibly accommodate at that site, eventually, you said 70?
Well, SMUD indicated 77 electrified vehicles, I don't know where they came up with that number, RT indicated that to myself and Mr. Palazzo, so I don't know, you know, how much, that site's going to be able to hold hundreds.
Right.
Just the nine acres.
I don't know how many buses the school districts have put together, but...
About 35, right now.
Put together, both of them?
They share.
Yeah, they're all in one yard.
Grammar school shares one yard.
All in one yard.
Council member Sandu, were you done?
Yeah, I'm done. I just wanted to make sure we communicate with the...
So, I mean, if you did have 40...
This is the yard that they're in right now, they're in about two and a half acres.
So if they didn't grow their fleet, and they got 40 buses, they go in and out twice a day, you know, morning and then afternoon?
131 trips.
So, that's actually 160 by my math, I went to go high, but I think I'm pretty sure it's 160.
They don't all, some of them go different times, one trip, two trips.
Anyways, it's really relevant, and I appreciate your comments, but I think that what he stated is that it doesn't, even if we were to postpone and reach the school district, and they said, you know, we are not interested, it's not going to change his recommendation, you know, that's still the site, regardless of whether or not they were interested or not, it doesn't seem to really be a factor at this point, really, so...
Their supervisor's the one that told us how many trips.
It truly is a factor in the layout of the site, because if we can accommodate somebody, we'd probably put our fuel island to where we can handle four or five buses at a time. If we were just accommodating just the transit site, we'd be in a small little area, about two, two and a half acres, we'd just combine everything, but by trying to accommodate somebody, push the fuel out a little bit, move the driveways a little bit, make this building to where there could be some shared facilities of the building, with restrooms, meeting rooms, you know, shared items, so it can keep costs down for everybody, so it'd be nice if we could get somebody in there, but we have to move, you know, on this. And we have been talking with the school district for a year and a half, different people, and they changed their players pretty recently in the last year or so, some of the key players, so, but we've got to move forward, thank you.
All right, any other discussion by council members? Is there any public comment? All right. So we need adopt a resolution approving, just moving forward with the wastewater treatment plant site as the preferred location for the new transit operation and maintenance center.
Moved.
By council member Campion, can I get a second?
I would do the second.
Second by council member Sandu, roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Farmer?
No.
Council member Sandu?
Aye.
Council member Campion?
Aye.
Council member Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Lamson?
Aye. Motion passes four to one. All right, moving on to communication, do we have any? Not tonight. Please, people, send us letters. Any comments by staff, shall we? You don't get any more comments, so... Ms. Tyson?
Nothing from me, thank you.
Mr. Salim, welcome, and thank you for taking some questions.
Yes, no, absolutely, no, I'm just excited to be here again and look forward to serving the city, thank you.
You're done. Ms. Hall?
So we have, we are currently recruiting for the positions of parks worker one temporary, police officer, swim coach, wastewater plant supervisor, wastewater system operator one and two, water system operator one, two, and youth sports official for softball. Tomorrow also, the HR division, as well as a member from Parks and Rec and the police recruitment team, will be at Liberty Ranch High School for their career fair, so we'll be talking to them about a career in public service and in public safety, so that should be fun.
Are you going to be there, too?
Yes.
Oh, great, make sure you get a picture posted.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Solis?
No, thank you.
Chief Sockman?
So, we're still going under that premise that I have all of their time if they pass, right? No? Okay, all right.
Did anyone tell Mr. Salim how much time you really have?
Already, I'm done, okay, all right, I'll make it quick. Hey, so on March 20th, we have a coffee with a cop at Starbucks, so since I've been complaining March 20th, we've got a lot of comments about the fact that they're always in the daytime, so this one's going to be from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM.
Oh, nice.
We'll also be at River Oaks Elementary for Career Day on March 27th, and on April 27th, I know it's a ways out, but the DEA prescription drug take-back event is going to be that day, the reason why I wanted to bring that one up is, we have a drop box in the lobby of the PD, and citizens can drop prescription medication in that drop box anytime that we're open, and they don't have to make contact with the, with the front counter, it's open up, pull it open like a mailbox, drop it in, close it, and off they go, so what happens with those medications is, on April 27th, that medication gets turned in with that collection that we do every six months, and that's it.
Great, thank you. Mr. Palazzo?
Nothing further, thank you.
Ashley is here, anything? Okay. Council member Campion?
Nothing more.
Council member Lozano?
Just one thing, look forward to Friday, our strategic plan workshop, all-day Friday, I think I'm...
You're looking forward to it?
Expanded, didn't it?
I absolutely am.
Eat dirty sharp, please, at the PD.
What's that?
I said, are you really, though?
I am, I have, I have ideas.
Do you have comments? Okay. Vice Mayor Farmer?
Just that I'm happy that we were able to get the PD some equipment they need, I'm sure they're all going to be really excited, and glad that the council could support our department, as we all promised we would do.
Thanks, Mike, for your question, your answers were very good, thank you very, for, you know, indulging me, you know, I tend to ask a lot of questions sometimes, so trial by fire there for you, and thank you, Mark, for your, your answers on my questions, so that's all I have for tonight.
Council member Sandu?
Nothing to report.
Congratulations to all the new commissioners, glad to see that going, thank you, staff, for all your input today, and are there any events coming up? Oh, 150-year sesquicentennial?